We'll call the first meeting of the month of June order. Can you call the role, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Palafas.
President.
Trustee Stanton.
Present.
Trustee Gata.
Present.
Trustee Vandenberg, Trustee Mills, Trustee Newell.
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present. Can everybody please rise? Trustee Palafas will lead us in the pledge.
Sure. Pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Trustee Palafas. Trustees Mills and Vandenberg have excused absences. I'd like to note for the record that this meeting is being presented live on our cable channel and will be broadcast later in the week. At this point, with the leave of the board, I'd like to move around the agenda a little bit and go down to President's Report, simply for the purposes of proclamations and presentations, so that some of the folks here will be able to go home, unlike us. Okay, who's got the first proclamation, Madam Clerk?
I have the first one. Officer of the Mayor proclamation: Whereas exemplary public service employment is of vital importance in assuring provision of service directly toward the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of any community; and whereas the police department has upon its roster an individual who should be commended for assisting said department in faithfully serving the citizens of this community; and whereas length of service coupled with continued training, positive attitude toward assigned job tasks makes a profile of this dedicated employee; and whereas the village of Hoffman Estates, on behalf of its citizens, desires to acknowledge its indebtedness and gratitude for forty-five years of dedicated proficiency in the aforementioned department; be it therefore resolved that William D. McLeod, acting under and by the virtue of authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and the laws of this village of Hoffman Estates, hereby proclaim Tuesday, June fourteenth, 2016, as Robert Kravitz Day in the Village of Hoffman Estates, and urge all employees and citizens of the village to join us in expressing gratitude and appreciation to this employee who may have assisted them with outstanding service.
Chair, accept a motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion to second. I'm actually surprised it's only forty-five years. Bob was a police officer when I first moved to Hoffman Estates, and he retired from that and became an auxiliary service officer, so he never did retire, and we're very happy he stayed with us all these years, Bob. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Prose, the ayes have a motion carried. Bob, come on up. Bring your wife and family members with you. Yes, you did. They'll get him back eventually. We got a picture, Bob, and your wife. Will you introduce your wife, Bob?
I'm sorry, my wife, Christine.
And who are those folks back there?
Not with me, but you guys can be.
Hardy, hardy, huh?
Hardy, hardy. Yeah, you're too tall, Bob. Thank you. Thanks, Bob. Okay, who's next?
I am. And, let's see, Officer of the Mayor proclamation: Whereas Men's Health Month is celebrated across the country with screenings, health fairs, media appearances, and other health education and outreach activities; and whereas the purpose of Men's Health Month is to heighten the awareness of preventable health problems and encourage early detection and treatment of disease among men and boys; and whereas despite advances in medical technology and research, men continue to live an average of five years less than women, with African-American men having the lowest life expectancy; and whereas leading causes of death for men include heart disease, cancer, and accidents, unintentional injuries; and whereas the risk of completed suicide is more than one hundred times greater than average in the first year after an attempt, eighty times greater for women, two-hundred times greater for men, and three-hundred times greater for white men over sixty-five; and whereas creating school and community programs which target adult men can help to reduce rates of mortality from disease, improve overall health, and save money; be it therefore resolved that Bill McLeod, acting under and by the virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and the laws of this village of Hoffman Estates, hereby proclaim June 2016 as Men's Health Awareness Month in the Village of Hoffman Estates, and urge all Hoffman Estate citizens, government agencies, business leaders, hospitals, schools, and public and private institutions in the village to promote awareness of men's health, to support programs and policies that raise awareness of a broad range of men's health issues, and provide opportunities for all to participate in the awareness and the education of men's health.
Chair, accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Prose, the ayes have a motion carried. Dr. Savidra, will you accept this? Appreciate the great job your department does.
I have the next one. Officer of the Mayor proclamation: Whereas the theme for 2016 World Blood Donor Day on June fourteenth is "Blood connects us all"; and whereas blood transfusion saves lives and improves health, but many patients requiring transfusion do not have timely access to safe blood, providing safe and adequate blood should be an integral part of every country's national healthcare policy and infrastructure; and whereas around one hundred and eight million units of donated blood are collected globally every year, nearly fifty percent of those blood donations are collected in high-income countries, home to less than twenty percent of the world's population; and whereas an adequate and reliable supply of safe blood can be assured by a stable base of regular voluntary unpaid blood donors, regular voluntary unpaid blood donors are also the safest group of donors, as the prevalence of blood-borne infections is lowest among these donors; and whereas forty countries collect less than twenty-five percent of their blood supplies from voluntary unpaid blood donors, the World Health Organization's goal is for all countries to obtain all blood supplies from voluntary unpaid donors by 2020, in accordance with World Health Assembly Resolution 28.72, which was adopted in 1975; and whereas in May 2005, as the fifty English session of the World Health Assembly, one hundred ninety-two member states of the World Health Organization adopted Resolution WHOA 58 dot one-three to establish World Blood Donor Day as an annual event to be celebrated each year on June fourteenth; be it therefore resolved that William D. McLeod, acting under and by virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and laws of this village of Hoffman Estates, hereby proclaim that Tuesday, June fourteenth, 2016, as World Blood Donor Day in the Village of Hoffman Estates, and urge all Hoffman Estate citizen, government agencies, business leaders, hospitals, schools, and public and private institutions in the village to promote awareness of blood donation and to provide opportunities for all to participate in the giving of blood in our community.
Chair, accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's a motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Prose, the ayes have a motion carried. Dr. Savidra, keep making you walk. Get your steps in. Thank you. This time I'd ask Michelle Palafas to step forward if she could. Each year, the Hoffman Estates Commission for Disabled Citizen seeks nominations for the commission's annual Barb Basil Community Recognition Award. This award recognizes an outstanding citizen, employee, or student of Hoffman Estates. Individuals who are nominated must have a disability and have worked to overcome the challenges associated with their disability, achieving excellence through academic work, community involvement, and extracurricular activities. The commission received several nominations this year and ultimately selected Patrick Brock to receive this award. I welcome Michelle Palafas, Chair of the Commission for Disabled Citizens, to say a few words about this award and present the award to Patrick. We also have a proclamation from the village board that we'd like to read once the award has been presented. Michelle?
Thank you, Mayor McLeod. Thank you, Board. I'm very pleased, on behalf of the Commission for Disabled Citizens, to present to you an amazing young man, Mr. Patrick Brock. Patrick, will you join us, please? Come on up. A little bit about Patrick. He has played an integral part of our community. He has been highly involved in Hoffman Estates High School and a graduate of that high school. He continued on to be in the ATP program where he performed and also made headways over at Friendship Village to not only volunteer over there, but create programming based on his volunteerism. Patrick currently is at the Clearbrook Center, and he's working and employed there. He's been very involved. He's just been an amazing young man in our community. He's led others. He has an amazing family and now is a leader in his family with the recent passing of his father, and he carries the torch for him to continue to better himself and better others who follow his example. So, Patrick, on behalf of the commission, we're pleased to award you the Barb Basil Award for your accomplishments and all the amazing things you've done. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hey, Patrick. Patrick, step here. Don't go anywhere.
John.
Don't go anywhere.
You're also going to receive a little something in the mail as well, and I know you said you wanted to say something to Mayor McLeod and the Board. Did you want to say thank you or something? You said that earlier?
Thank you. It was awful nice of you guys.
You're welcome. We appreciate everything you've done, Patrick. Now, don't go away. I have something else here also. Village of Hoffman Estates, Office of the Mayor proclamation: Whereas Patrick Brock has been awarded the Barb Basil Community Recognition Award, as a citizen who has overcome the challenges associated with a disability, achieving excellence through academic work, community involvement, and extracurricular activities; whereas Patrick has commendably graduated from the Adult Transition Program at Hoffman Estates High School, has often been heard saying, "I don't give up, and I enjoy helping others"; whereas Patrick has exhibited deep empathy towards others, helping and interacting with individuals at home, at school, and in the community. His volunteer activities include helping seniors with dementia at the Friendship Village and contributing his time and energy to Special Olympics projects; whereas Patrick's love of music, acting, and dance has given him the opportunity to share his talent with people through Willow Creek Community Church, at the College Church in Wheaton, and at the ATP's Got Talent Show through Hoffman Estates High School; whereas despite significant recent challenges, Patrick continues to persevere in his life. His caring nature, empathy, compassion for others shines through in whatever endeavor he takes on. Be it therefore resolved that I, William D. McLeod, acting under and by virtue of the authority vested in me by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and the laws of this village of Hoffman Estates, hereby proclaim Tuesday, June seventh, 2016, as Patrick Brock Day in the Village of Hoffman Estates, and I urge everyone to join in this observance. Patrick?
Thank you.
Family, come on up, too. Come on up, everybody. Next one, Patrick. This is for you. Very welcome. Let's get, we need to get some pictures here, too, Patrick. Don't run away yet. Want to introduce your family that's here, Patrick?
This is my little sister, Lucy. And this is my mom, Carol.
Welcome to all of you. Son you can be very proud of, and a brother.
All right, I'll count this out for you. Okay, one, two, three. Do another. Okay, one, two, three. That's a good one. Yeah, do you guys want to jump in?
Keep your members up here.
A lot harder with her.
All right, we'll count it out again. One, two, three. We'll do another. One, two, three. Looks good. Thank you. Congratulations.
Next, we're going to present an honor to a scouter, a Girl Scout. I recently received an email from Hoffman Estates resident, Michelle Baldwin, regarding the achievements of her youngest daughter, Emily K. Baldwin, and her recent achievement of Gold Status through the Girl Scouts organization. I'm pleased to read the following information about Emily as told through her mom, Michelle. Emily's goal is to be a chemistry teacher, particularly one who can teach in a way students can understand. Her love of chemistry was cultivated by her teacher, Susan Barber. This passion for chemistry was instrumental in developing her Girl Scout project, for which she achieved her Gold Award. Her Girl Scout leader, Donna Marie Advanny, helped her obtain this wonderful honor. Emily's project incorporated tie-dying and senior citizens. She had a group of students tie-dyed shirts on spring break a year ago. She contacted the barn in Schaumburg and coordinated effort with their senior services coordinator. Emily contacted the barn in Schaumburg and coordinated effort with their senior services coordinator. Emily and a group of friends made thirty-two shirts and went to the barn in April 2015 and had the seniors pick out a shirt, talk, play games, eat, and interact. The seniors enjoyed the students, and the students learned a great deal, too. Emily graduated from Schaumburg High School in 2015 and attends Illinois State University. She is a Golden Apple Scholar, honor student at ISU, and shaved her head three times for St. Paul's. Obtained a Spanish minor, presented at ChemWest 2015, and was active as St. Hubert Church Youth Ministry member. She is involved in college by holding positions on SEA, Golden Apple honors, and St. Paul's. Emily is to be commended for outstanding accomplishments. We also have a proclamation Emily would like to read and present. You guys want to come up to the podium here? No, just right up there. You want to introduce your family, Emily?
This is my dad, Dwayne Baldwin. This is my sister. She's a senior now in college. And my mother, Michelle Baldwin.
Great. Well, welcome to all of you. Village of Hoffman Estates, Office of the Mayor proclamation: Where a scout, Emily K. Baldwin, has been awarded the Girl Scout Gold Award, the highest, most prestigious award in Girl Scouting, which symbolizes outstanding accomplishments in leadership, community service, career planning, and personal development. Whereas through her dedication and hard work, Eagle Scout Baldwin has cultivated her individual potential. She demonstrates outstanding leadership skills, high values, a firmly grounded social conscience, and established foundations for a lifetime of active citizenship. Whereas Scout Baldwin sets an exceptional example for her peers and friends through her courage, confidence, and character. Whereas congratulations and commendations are due to Scout Baldwin for dedication and determination in achieving this highly esteemed Girl Scouting Award; be it therefore resolved that I, William D. McLeod, acting under and by virtue of the authority vested in me by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and the laws of this village of Hoffman Estates, hereby proclaim Tuesday, June seventh, Emily K. Baldwin Day in the Village of Hoffman Estates, and urge everyone to join in this observance. Emily? Right up, everybody. Congratulations on having a wonderful daughter. Let's get a picture here.
Yep, you guys gather right in front there. Just a little bit. Let's see here. Let's see, there. Nope, you guys are perfect. Okay, here we go. One, two, three. Do one more. One, two, three. Good, congratulations.
It's quite an achievement to become a Gold Girl Scout. Actually, I have one at home. My wife is a Gold Girl Scout. Next, we have, I'd like to call Amida Health and Alexian Brothers forward. They have a presentation to make. The Village of Hoffman Estates has been very fortunate to have such a great corporate partner with the Amida Healthcare, Alexian Brothers Healthcare System. The hospital, St. Alexius, provided a million dollars for the cost of our Barrington Road interchange, and the fact that the hospital was right off that interchange area was very helpful in getting the interchange through, and I want to thank Kelly Clancy, your lobbyist, who is very persuasive down there with Springfield. I've been on the receiving end of her persuasion, and she was very good, so. Do you want to say a few words?
Yes, I would like to.
Yes.
My name is Len Wilk. I'm the president and chief executive officer of St. Alexis Medical Center and also the Alexian Brothers Women's and Children's Hospital, and with me is Dr. Todd Zimmerman, who is the medical director of Pediatric Emergency Services. And we would like to present to the village this check for one million dollars, our part in terms of the funding for the interchange. And Mayor, we'd like to thank you for your leadership and all the trustees on making this a reality. So, thank you.
Set that down. I'm going to get one for the side, too. Okay, here we go. One, two, three. Good. I'll take one with myself. One, two, three.
Want to make rounds?
Sure.
Thank you. One more shot. Let's get everybody together here. You guys want to hold this again?
Sure.
Not so high.
Not so high, yeah. The podium was in the way.
Yep, that's great. Okay, here we go. One, two, three. We'll do another. One, two, three. I'll grab one here. One, two, three. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, the Director of Finance, Rachel Musial, is going to put that in the bank tonight, aren't you, Rachel? We followed up a little bit. It'll be fine. Okay, at this point, we'll go back to our agenda as published, and we'll go to item number three, recognition of the audience. This is the time, if anyone has a question or concern that they want to bring before the village board, now's the time to do it. Going once, twice, three times, we'll move on. Chair, accept a motion to approve the minutes of the May sixteenth, 2016 meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion to second. Any questions or concerns on these minutes? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Prose, the ayes have a motion carried. Move on to the consent agenda. Chair, accept a motion.
So moved. I'll second.
There's a motion to second. Are any questions or concerns on any of these items? Seeing none, can you pull the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. Move on to President's Report, though we already covered most of it. I do have a resignation, two resignations. Diane Lawrence from the Platts Concert and the Commission for Seniors. Chair, accept a motion.
So moved, with regrets.
I'll second.
Motion to second. Yeah, we're all going to regret having this hard-working lady leave, but she's, her husband's retiring, and they're moving down to Florida, and we wish them well. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Prose, the ayes have a motion carried. Last Monday, May thirtieth, we had a very moving Memorial Day ceremonies at both our Hoffman Estates Veterans Memorial in front of the Police Building and then at St. Petersen with the joint Hoffman-Schaumburg celebration of our veterans and thanking them for making the ultimate sacrifice. Wednesday, the first, I participated in the executive committee meeting of the Northwest Municipal Conference, and here at Village Hall, we had the School District Fifty-four Community Center End of the School Year Event that several of the trustees and I were able to attend. Saturday, June fourth, we had the Fishing Derby, the Chamber Fishing Derby at South Ridge Lake. In spite of the rain, we had a really good crowd, and the day turned out to be off and on, pretty, pretty nice. Off and on, of course. Sunday, the fifth, we attended a block party on Silver Pine Drive with several of the trustees and our village clerk, and I guess that's all that I have for now. We'll move on to trustee comments. We'll start with trustee Stanton, who's sitting here on the side all by himself.
Yeah, all by myself. Isn't that a song, too?
I think so.
All right, between the twenty-first and twenty-fifth of May, I was able to attend with several others the ICSC convention on behalf of the village. On the thirtieth of May, I did attend the Memorial Day services, both here in Hoffman Estates and the ones also by St. Petersen Schaumburg. And on the fourth of June, I did check out the Hoffman Estates Chamber of Fishing Derby. It was well-attended. I was there at about nine-thirty AM. I seemed to be all alone by myself at that time, but everybody else seemed to be there as far as fishermen, and I know one gentleman had already caught a fish, I think, about sixteen and a half inches at that time. I don't know if that was the winning fish or not, but I know they were still trying. And I want to congratulate today Patrick Brock, who was recognized tonight with the Barb Basil Roy, I'm sorry, and also Emily Baldwin, who received her Girl Scout Gold Award.
Thank you, trustees. And trustee Palafas.
I wanted to also thank you, send a thanks to everyone who attended the Memorial Day presentation at the Veterans Memorial at the Hoffman Estates Police Department. It was a good weather day as compared to other years. I also attended the ICSC, which was fantastic, and as always, we had a number of great meetings that we hope will be fruitful, especially a couple of those possible new developments and whatnot. The Fishing Derby seemed to have a great day, despite some early rough weather. I wanted to congratulate our police for the cop on top for Special Olympics. And actually, Sunday morning, which has been my fourth year, was with the group that does the torch run, although this year I opted for a mountain bike, but I was there with Bev and, you know, a bunch of the folks from the Disability Commission that were here just moments ago. I also wanted to, you know, pass on congratulations to Patrick Brock. My son AJ knows Patrick, and they have a pass together, as well as Emily Baldwin. I'm always really impressed at, you know, these young people that have a resume a mile long, and, you know, they're not even twenty-one for the most part, so that's really impressive. And other than that, we've had a number of meetings about the arena, as always, and, you know, things that are happening out there that are coming up and whatnot, so other than that, that's it for me.
Okay, thank you, trustee Palafas. Trustee Newell.
Oh, goodness me. There's a lot, so. I'm going back all the way till the twentieth of May, sorry. That was the cop on the rooftop for the Special Olympics. The explorers were out there and some of the police, and of course, you go out there and get your donut and whatever, so. And then on the twenty-first, at Cabela's, several of us stopped and did the boat safety, which was for the life jackets, and they were going to see if they were going to set the world record or not this year. And the twenty-second, Eagle Scout Tyler Cole Matusiak, great award. He made it to Eagle Scout. Had a great project. I don't want to go into it because I choke up on that one. I can't. Anyway, on the twenty-second, we celebrated Catherine McCord's sixty-fifth birthday. On the twenty-fourth, the garden club came here to the village as part of the sustainability also and did a presentation on how to make your flowers and everything else grow for the spring, make it look good. On the twenty-seventh, many of us attended the VA Hospital ribbon cutting that now is in that now is in Hoffman Estates out west. On the 29th was the Teal Court Block Party. On the 30th, of course, was the Hoffman Estates Memorial Day Ceremony here at the police department, which was, as trustee Palafas had said, beautiful weather. It was a great ceremony and a lot of people were there, very moving. Let me see, we're on the 4th. As the mayor had said, it was off and on. I think we were there at the off part at the Fishing Derby because we got soaked. I don't know, so. Didn't see any fish, saw people. But I don't know, it was on the 4th, so. And then on the 5th, the block party up at Silver Pine. Today, congrats to some very, very special people. And all that they do is Patrick Brock for the Barb Basil Award. And congrats to Emily Baldwin, who got the Gold Girl Scout Award, which is amazing how these guys fit all this in. It's a lot, but congrats and thank you.
Thank you, trustee Newell. Trustee Gata?
Okay, on Tuesday, May 17th, attended the ribbon cutting at Thomas Jefferson School for the Free Little Library. Here Eagle Scout Jack Purcell, from troop number 29, put this project together and built a cabinet to hold these books, which is going to be outside the front door of the school. And the concept is that you bring a book and you take a book. And I think that is tremendous idea. And it's for adults, it's for children, and so forth. And this is one of two that he's doing. And he's going to another school to be doing that one. The mayor and I had attended that. Also then, on Saturday, May 21st, the Safe Boating Event at Cabela's, put on by the Fox Valley Sail and Power Squadron that was here the week before. And of course, this is like the fourth time that trustee Newell and myself attended. And there was also trustee Vandenberg and the village clerk attended that same morning with us. Then on Sunday, May 22nd, the Eagle Scout Ceremony for Tyler Cole Matusik. That was at Inverness Park. And again, it was trustee Newell and trustee Vandenberg that accompanied us. Then on Friday, the 27th, we had the Edward Hines VA Hospital Cutting that was now at the Perry Point Medical Center, right here in Hoffman Estates. So they moved from Elgin over to us at Hoffman, which makes it ideal because it's nice and close. Then on Sunday, attended the block party at Teal Court. Then on Monday, the 30th, Memorial Day Services that was at the police department here. And of course, we all had gone to St. Peters Lutheran Church. And then on Saturday, June 4th, that, the Chamber Fishing Derby. We must have just missed you because Ann and I got there at about nine o'clock and I was soaked because the jacket I had, I thought was water repellent and found out that it was not.
I missed the rain.
Well, you were lucky that you missed the rain on that one. So, and then also, on the 4th, for the rest of the day, then Johanna and I celebrated our wedding anniversary, you know?
Anniversary.
So that worked out pretty good. And of course, then on Sunday, we had the block party at 1217 Silver Pine Drive with the mayor and trustee Newell and clerk Romanoff.
That's all I have, mayor.
Thank you, trustee Gata. Move on to 6C, Village Manager's Report. Manager O'Malley?
Mayor, there's just one item tonight. I just wanted to introduce Jordan Lester. She's our new administrative intern in general government. And today is her first day, so she was lucky enough to be here for the board meeting.
Welcome aboard. Stand up, yeah. Welcome. Okay, move on to 6D, Village Clerk's Report.
Okay, during the month of May, 75 passports were processed and 159 FOIA requests went through. Going back to the Fishing Derby, Lee Bartokowicz?
Markoyak.
Yeah, her. Said if they sold $50 in hot dogs that the announcer guy was going to have to kiss the fish. But by the time that they got to the 50 bucks, all they could get was a little fish, so they did a little fish kiss and not the big one that was caught.
The big catfish would have been.
I know, I heard a big one.
It was huge.
Yeah, a great big one was there. So, I missed the kissing of the fish because I got stuck on the rain on the way home because I got there later. Yeah, but they had a good time. They said that they, there were a lot of people there. Rain kept people away, but it was good. So, it was good.
Excellent.
Welcome, Jordan. You're with the people now.
Move on to community reports. And as a member of all three of these committees, trustee Stanton's going to let us know what's happening next week. Need a drink of water before you start?
All right, next Monday on June 13th, 2016, right here, the council chambers, the Planning, Building, and Zoning Committee will meet. And I believe chairman person, chairperson Karen Mills will be here at that time. There will be a roll call, then approval of the minutes for May 9th of 2016. And there will be new business. There'll be four items so far on the agenda. First is a request by Golden Goose Enterprises LLC, Rubina Realty Corporation, Plum Farms OSR 72 LLC, Urban Street LLC, and Streetscape USA LLC for a courtesy review of a proposed 185-acre mixed-use development north of Higgins Road and west of Route 59, known as Plum Farms, including discussion of: A. A master concept development plan, including specific proposals from Urban Street Group LLC and Streetscape USA LLC. B. Overview of potential changes to the previously approved documents and an annexation agreement for the 145-acre parcel, also known as the Other Rubina Property. And C. Direct staff regarding consideration of potential designation of the 16-acre, 24-acre, and 145-acre parcels as a tax increment financing district to pay for eligible municipal and developer project costs. Two. A request acceptance of the Department of Development Services monthly report for planning division. Three. Request acceptance of the Department of Development Services monthly report for code enforcement division. And four. Request acceptance of the Department of Development Services monthly report for economic development and tourism. There then will be a President's Report. If there's anything in other, we'll do that. No items in review that I can see at this point, and then there will be an adjournment. After that adjournment, there will be a meeting of the General Administration and Personnel Committee of the Village Hoffman Estates on that same date. And there will be a roll call. At that time, I believe I will be leading because I believe chairman Vandenberg will not be present. And there will be approval of the minutes of May 9th of 2016. There will be new business, three items. Request acceptance of the cable TV monthly report. Two. Request acceptance of the Human Resources Management monthly report. And three. Request acceptance of the Legislative Operations and Outreach monthly report. If the president has anything further to say, he will have a chance to do that. There's nothing in other or items in review, and then that will be an adjournment of that meeting. After that, the Transportation and Road Improvement Committee will meet, in which I am the chairperson. There'll be a roll call, approval of the minutes of May 9th of 2016. And then there's only one item in new business, and that's the request acceptance of the Transportation Division monthly report. The president has a third chance to say something if he wants. I think he will probably pass on that. And then there's nothing other in other or items in review, and then we will adjourn that meeting.
Thank you, trustee Stanton.
Thank you.
Move on to seven, Planning and Zoning Commission Report. Chairperson Combs, come on down. It's not 9:30 at night, we must have done something wrong here.
I know, I'm happy. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended for approval a request by Patrick and Tara McDonough for a five-foot side yard setback variation from Section 9-5-2-D-5 of the zoning code to permit a 10-foot setback instead of the minimum 15-foot for an existing single-family home and proposed addition at 995 Aspen Street with two conditions, vote was nine a's, two absent.
Chair accept a motion?
So moved.
I'll second. There's a motion to second, any questions on this item? Seeing none, can you call a roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Palafas?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Newell?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye, motion carried.
Planning and Zoning Commission recommended for approval a request by Robert Ricevee for a 15-foot corner side yard setback variation from Section 9-3-3-C-2 to allow a six-foot-high solid fence to be a zero feet from the western property line instead of the minimum required 15 feet at 795 Cambridge Lane, vote was nine a's, two absent.
Chair accept a motion?
So moved.
I'll second. There's a motion to second, any questions on this item? Trustee Gata?
Yes, it says here that the fence will be 10 feet high. Is that going to be blocking anything?
It's commercial.
Oh, this is commercial?
No, I mean it backs up to commercial.
That was the only question I had.
Okay.
Anyone have anything else? Seeing none, can you call a roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Palafas?
Trustee Stanton has a question.
I'm sorry. The actual letter I have here is that it's going to be a six-foot fence. Was that changed?
Chair, do you want to come on up and just identify yourself with the record and tell us what you got to say?
Yeah, it is a six-foot high fence. That's what it says in the motion.
Says the typo?
I don't see the typo. It says six feet solid fence.
Well, at any rate, it is going to be six feet. Is that correct, sir? At least. Yes. And you, Mr. Ricevee?
Yes, I am.
Yes, okay. That address your concern?
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Seeing nothing else, can you pull the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Palafas?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Newell?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chairperson Combs, move on to eight additional business. Request approval of a request by Verizon Wireless for an extension to an existing cellular antenna license at 95 Astor Lane. This item had been deferred. The petitioner is requesting extending deferral until June 20th. Trustee Palafas, you want to make a motion?
No. Thanks for asking, no.
Motion.
There's a motion to defer. There's a motion, there's a second. Any discussion? Trustee Palafas?
While we're on the subject, I'm not voting no to the antennas being there because they're already there. I'm voting no to the amount of money they want to pay us less because I really don't think they have anywhere else to go. And if they had the opportunity to do that to us, I think they would on a commercial level, so. That being said.
I understand that.
Okay, I just wanted to make it clear.
There's a motion to second for defer. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose?
No.
We need a roll, we need a roll call on deferral? Mr. Jenner?
No, you don't.
No, no, I didn't think we did. Okay, 8B, request board approval of an ordinance granting a variation to premises at 795 Cambridge Lane. So moved. There's a motion, there's a second. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, can you pull the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Palafas?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Newell?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye, motion carried. Chair accept a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion to second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose, the ayes have it, we are adjourned.